Well, welcome everybody to the Sherburne Planning Committee Meeting. The date is September sixteenth, the time is seven oh three. I move that we open the meeting at time seven oh three. All those in favor?
Steph?
Second.
All right.
Uh, second.
Okay.
Uh, Steph? And I think we have to do roll call vote because it's hybrid, right?
Yeah.
So Steph?
Uh, I.
Jim?
Hi.
Rob?
Hi.
And I Frank Hook, I'm an I as well. Okay, um, minimize my screen, so. And read the agenda. So the agenda for tonight's meeting. Before I do, are there any items not anticipated by the chair within forty eight hours in advance of this meeting? Hearing none, uh, the rest of the agenda will include the minutes reviewing and approving the meeting minutes of August the nineteenth.
Benjamin James.
We have a public hearing at seven fifteen, it's a continuation of the A and R approval not required. Form A, application and amend planning board regulations three eighty part two article two procedures. For submission of plan of requiring approval under subdivision control law. Our current planning board business includes item one for the annual town meeting of twenty twenty six. Stormwater management plan, housekeeping items update, sign by law update, ADU updates, and other items for consideration. Item two is EA zoning update, item three review of timeline. Item four is public shade and scenic road tree hearing to be discussed for our next meeting on October the seventh, twenty twenty five. Then there will be reports from the other meetings with the reports on meetings with other boards and entities, town planner report, and next meeting dates. So are there any comments about the agenda as they've been read? Hearing none, I'd like to make a motion to accept the the agenda for tonight's meeting. Do I hear a second? It's been moved a second in it, all those in favor, Steph Harrison? Jim Guarino?
Hi.
Rob Wolf?
Hi.
And I Frank Hook, I'm an I as well. Okay, so we have a few moments, so we'll go to the the minutes of August the nineteenth. They were sent previously in an addition, an addendum, an attachment was sent earlier today. I'm not sure if everybody's had a chance to read that. That it addendum to or that attachment that will be added to the meeting meetings. It was my comments about the Melbourne farm. Does it has anybody not read them?
Well, you the attachment was read at the last meeting, right?
No.
Yes. Yes.
I read it, did I read it again a second time?
Sorry, you read it at the eight nineteen, the meeting minutes for approving is the one where you read it.
Well, I read it initially on the on eight nineteen, we did not read it again last meeting.
No, he's just in these minutes.
So I I have a question. If everybody's had a chance to read them, so let me ask that first, has everybody a chance to read, has everybody had a chance to read them, yes?
Read the minutes, but I didn't reread the attachment that of your comments, which I think what we're not sure what you're asking.
Well, I'm asking if you've read it again, it's it's. The reason I'm, the reason I'm asking is because if the board is in agreement, we instead of it just being a comment from one person from the board, it could be a comment for that the whole board agrees upon, even though I made the comment.
Well, I don't think we can have the minutes reflect that. Because the minutes, it was a comment from you, right? So I don't think that we could amend the the meeting that happened to have the statement be from the board, if that makes sense.
Right, I think if you want to tonight, we could, we could all state whether we're all in agreement with it or not and put it in the minutes for tonight. That would be reasonable.
We could, but not amend what happened in the night, the meeting from the nineteenth.
Yeah, so I like Rob's idea for for doing it that way procedurally, so. I I just wanted to know if you wanted to have your names associated with it as well for the entire board. Or if you did not, and I just thought that it was an important statement to be made, and I feel as though the trustees were happy with that statement and, you know, I they're doing something that's really, I think, very special and terrific for our town and our community. And, you know, I'd like to give them a shout out and more than just from one person on the planning.
Like to support Frank's statement, which is attached to the minutes.
I'm I'm, I just didn't read it, so.
Oh.
Uh, and I didn't download the version that Heidi sent, so. Can we, can we? Thanks, can we? And and just just to be clear, can we take an action on an item like this that wasn't on the agenda to discuss no more farm, it's it's okay if we can, I just don't.
Well, we're discussing minutes, so we can say the attachment that's in these minutes, we would like to review and make a separate vote, if you want that. But I've still approved the minutes for this one as written.
Yes.
I know, I don't want to approve the minutes as written, because I think it was missing something.
Okay, well, I'm okay, well, first we approve the minutes, and then the attachment that's in there, someone could say, I'd like to make a motion that we have a separate vote on the attachment.
Okay.
It's part of the, to me falls under the umbrella of minutes, but it's just not eight nineteen. All of us can't approve that on that day.
Right.
All of you.
Yeah, okay, yep, that looks. That looks fine for that purpose, do you?
I'm happy of the statement, if you'd like me to share my screen, I can do that.
Oh, no, we just do the midhouse, but should we, shouldn't we do the minutes first?
Yeah.
Sure.
Um. So I had two main comments, do you want me to share my screen, kind of, okay?
Because it is zoom recorded, young people, they watch this later can follow.
Okay. Minutes, there we go. So there was just a second missing on one of the motions. So I added that in, it's on top of the second, second, I don't know, on the second page. To sign the A and R last name, so I have that as Jim second. And then in the Melbourne farm discussion, I guess on the third page. I felt like it was lacking all of the discussion that we had on the conditions, and it was even lacking the conditions in the minutes.
That's a big point, so.
So I added a bunch of stuff in here, maybe for consideration, I don't know, but it, but the 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 minutes, here, I'll make it bigger. The the minutes themselves as written just talked about coordinating with the fire department.
Right.
But I've just mentioned discussion of screening, discussion of signage being consistent with other trusted properties, discussion of events requiring more parking. And that then Heidi summarized all the conditions and I wrote them as I had sort of understood them. And then changed, I think the motion was with the conditions discussed, so I felt like that was important to make sure it gets done communicated in minutes.
I agree.
That's it.
Steph does a good catch, really good.
Yep. We had a little bit of trouble with these minutes.
I I have a couple of items as well.
Okay, maybe I'll just add them in here, so they're all, yeah, then I'll just get me at the end.
So on the first page, under open meeting, my name is misspelled. It's no D.
Oh. I was looking at the other place, I was like, oh, no, I don't know, okay, got it.
And then on the second page, for about halfway down, says Tom Trainer mentioned that in consideration of the existing cesspools and older septic systems in town, such survey proposal should be viewed with caution.
I don't think that's what he said.
But why? Yeah, I I I don't know what I'm saying, I mean, well.
He was requesting to add cesspools to the list of structures that we were that we were talking, that we were putting in, because cesspools are not the same as septic systems, so he wanted, he was noting that like, if there's a cesspool, that's actually more important to note than of title fire septic system.
So would you say Tom Trainer mentioned that if we were noting existing septics, we should also include cesspools?
That existing cesspools and of older, well, it is older.
Yeah.
I remember there being discussion on those being hard to document, if there's no as-built plans available.
Yeah.
But that's what I was gonna add to it, but I think you bring up good points as well, Steph.
And maybe I'll say that, though, although these can be difficult to find on can be absent from plans.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, no good point, yeah.
Still anything else?
No, I think that was all, but it's probably more missing than it's not catching by reading through these.
Interesting, I wonder if there's properties in town where the current owners have no idea as to where the system actually is.
Yes.
Probably.
Yes.
Wouldn't you think that they would have to get it pumped every once in a while?
You'd be surprised how many people don't even realize that they should do that.
It's it's no requirement, I mean, it's a guideline, just so for the record, Brett Pierce, he destroyed.
Well, thank you.
Hi Brett, so, but I I thought for septic systems, they were a little bit with their design, they almost required more pumping.
Can be damage if you don't pump them. But that doesn't mean there is always damage, if you don't, it's a risk, right?
Okay.
Brett, did you have any corrections on the minutes?
Nope, nope, look at me.
Rob, anything that you saw?
No.
Okay. Just so you know, the person that takes our minutes is going to be leaving Sherburne up in front of the town, so I'm probably having to look around for another minutes taker. These took a long time to get, and they were not. I had to add in a lot, I still miss a lot, because I didn't have time to read your list of whole thing, but if anyone knows of anyone, please let me know.
We'll be here all night if I were writing.
We don't just have AI take the minutes?
I try to look at that, and you wouldn't believe the words that show up.
You wouldn't believe how bad it is that it, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
All right, so we making a motion to accept the minister, we now talking about the the attachment, or is that in a separate discussion?
We make, did we motion, did we action the minute?
No.
No, the the attachment is part of these meeting minutes, so you're voting to accept the attachments, and there's two attachments in this one, it's going to be the stormwater management plan approval for that regs and your letter that you write in, because it was part of the record.
So would you like me to share my screen so you can read what that comment was?
Well, if we do the votes first.
Well, we can't, I'm not voting it if we're still talking about the comments that are going to be added to this.
So you have more changes to the minutes, Frank, that you're gonna share?
I have no more changes to the minutes, I just, that I was just asking, and we, I thought I heard that we're doing all the minutes together in one vote, but we're doing it in.
Do we have another set of minutes?
No, the comments that we're going to add, finish that discussion.
There's there's two separate issues, Frank, we have to vote the minutes with the comments as one vote. A second vote you can take is to do a revote of your, the comments that you made, to see if the planning board wants to vote it, but that's a separate issue. I don't, I don't think.
First, when I said that first, I thought you said that was one vote, that's why I was thinking that we had to go to it first.
The one of these, the minutes with these comments and the two attachments, the comment is, and there's this, the stormwater. And then if someone wants to make a motion to have planning board fully endorse Frank's comments as a poll board, that would be a separate vote.
Got it. Right, so are there any other amendments to the minutes? Hearing none, I move that we accept the minutes as amended, do I hear a second?
A second.
So it's been moved and seconded, all those in favor, Rob? Jim?
Hi.
Brett?
Hi.
Rob?
Hi.
Steph?
Hi.
I Frank Hook, I'm an I as well. Okay, so they've been moved seconded and passed. So now the discussion on the attachment.
Brett, I know you came in halfway through this, so the attachment that was sent on the staff includes the comments that Frank read on Melbourne farm, and he would like to see if the planning board wants to add their name so that their comments come from a full board. So that's what we're gonna discuss now.
So I'm gonna share my screen so you can read what the the comments were, and then you have a discussion further.
My thought when when reviewing them just now was that if we're gonna make it a statement of support from the planning board, it probably needs to be sort of reworded a little bit, because it, as it's currently written, it was as as your comment, which was totally appropriate at that time. But as it's currently written, it's, um, uh.
We would like to say.
Prior to our vote, like, which is no longer the case, right, and then at the bottom it says, I strongly encourage a vote in favor, so that kind of stuff. Uh, like, there's no context for for an action, it would just be kind of the the bulk of the letter without the front and the back. Um, as a statement, so would need to be amended a little bit, I think, to be a
Started, we just started from right here.
Yep, that's what I mean.
And I would argue that we should end it.
To come before, after the first sentence of that paragraph, so for generations to come.
I wholeheartedly support, that we approve. Yeah, I guess we can go to right there. But that might make it harder to read, so I'm gonna take that highlighting off. I could read it to you all with the same verbatim that I read it the first time.
We are, we're just past our hearing start time, so we have to.
I wanna just, we're saying like, all except the first sentence and last sentence of that is the statements of support.
I think that that makes sense to me.
So that's the motion to accept the the comments as a comment from the the entire funding board with, as attached with the exception of the first and last sentence of the comments.
Sounds reasonable.
Okay, so we have a a motion and a second, all those in favor, Steph?
Hi.
Jim?
Hi.
Brett?
Hi.
Um, Rob?
Hi.
And I Frank Hook, I'm an I as well, thank you so much, everybody. Okay, so let's see if I can. Right, so I'd like to open the hearing at seven twenty three for the continuation of the A and R approval not required form a application and amend plan, planning board regulations three eighty part two article two procedures for submission of plans not requiring approval under subdivision control law. Uh, in opening this meeting. Do I hear, have a second?
Okay.
So it's been moved and seconded, all those in favor, Steph?
Hi.
Brett?
Hi.
Jim?
Hi.
Rob?
Hi.
And I Frank Hook, I'm an I as well. Do we have any further discussion on A and R? Form A application and amended planning board regulations and procedures?
Yes, because after speaking with town council, that we have to refocus on those items that address frontage access and the lot size, and that's what the focus of the A and R is. I think Steph was looking at Framingham, coming up with some suggestions, and we were trying to look back at our amendments and figure out what would work and what doesn't, I think, Steph, if you want to share the screen and go through, you can discuss.
Sure.
I just.
So Heidi sent me the Framingham language, and I weeded through it, and it's, they've got a really intense process.
They have a community notice requirement that you have to print out notices and have them planted, tacked up at the property. That then in A and R, it's been a twenty.
As big as I can, okay, so what what I'm proposing here is that item eight go back to how it is in the existing form, with no changes. Okay, just hear me out, and then there's another item nine, and the numbering is off here. That says for the creation of new lots only, include the following features within or adjacent to the public right of way, which may impede access to the parcel of land. If on a scenic road, stone walls, rock outcrops, and major trees ten inches or more, topographic plan at two-foot contours, so you could see what the driveway slope would need to look like in areas within the hundred-year or five-hundred-year floodplain, because the flooding stuff and the founder, the scenic road boundary markers are related to access, they kind of get deleted from the overall list of things to be included, and they get added as a subcomponent to access. Another option could be to take the buildings and structures out of the main list and put them also into the access, that's what Framingham has. I prefer to see all the buildings and structures in the lot and in the proposed lot, because it gives me more context when reviewing, but I, so that's why I left it in the main list, but it could also be removed from the main list and put into the access to new lots, and the reason I really like this access to new lots section is because if you're agreeing to an A and R, maybe you're buying a property in an A and R's, you know, upcoming, and this is gonna be the basis for what you're buying. If you don't see these things on it, you may not realize that your access could be completely blocked, right, not completely blocked, but much more more problematic to obtain access. And so just, I think this is like important information, and if the planning board, if it's in our purview to request this information to be able to understand the potential for access on a new lot, um, you know, if there's like a cliff, probably not sure, but if there was like a big rock cliff, and that's where your frontage is, and you couldn't get a driveway in there, that's not really a buildable lot, so I think all of this comes back to understanding how the lots are being created and whether whether access is even possible, or how difficult it would be to create access to the lot.
Not lucidary, the term that we keep seeing in our handbook.
I have a couple of comments on that, I I read through the not the entire, but some of the applicable sections of the state A and R handbook, and they do mention that specifically that you gotta just not have the frontage, but ensure that you can get access through the frontage and that um, you can get access to the area where a building might be able to be constructed. So if you had frontage, but then you have like wetlands all the way across the lot, and then you had buildable land in back, or that, that wouldn't be good enough, apparently.
So maybe instead of saying within or adjacent to the public right of way, which was the Framingham language, we could just say within the parcel, but which may impede access to the parcel.
Yeah.
Right, so it doesn't have to be like right at the right of way. Because Framingham's language was centered around the right of way, but it sounds, I I appreciate what you're saying.
Yeah, I mean.
Through the sixty-foot setback, we have to show access to that sixty-foot setback line.
Right.
Oh, to the buildable, that's what you mean by to the buildable area, oh, interesting, okay.
Yeah.
Um, probably features within, within this will be within the setback line. Keep track changes.
Well, I I can't remember the exact wording, but I even interpreted it, it wasn't necessarily just the setback line, but it's just like, if you had a lot that looked like it was all buildable and back, but there was like an impassable band of wetlands between you and the frontage. That wouldn't be valid as a buildable lot.
So what if we said, for the creation of new lots only, include the following features, then be silent, delete this. Right, which may impede access to the buildable portion of the parcel of land. So it's it's a little bit more vague in terms of like, we're not saying where you have to document these features, but they make, you have to document them where they may impede access to your buildable spot.
Yeah, that's actually, that's access to the potential house.
So maybe, so for the creation of new lots only, include the following features, where they may impede access to the buildable portion.
Do they have to include any wetlands on the A and R plan?
Yeah, well, that's.
Here, the ones that are accessed, that was the thing when I talk with town council, we can, we, they don't have to put wetlands on, we're only looking at for A and R endorsing that frontage.
So we we did have wetlands property-wide, but now we could take this, what's showing up as number nine, and put it as D.
Yeah.
And have it be in that category.
Do you want to keep the wetlands property-wide on it, Steph?
I kind of do, but I just, I I feel like we're, I don't want to I want the thing to be defensible too, right, so.
Oh, just to complicate things a little bit more, though, I I don't think this ends up needing changing. I think it's it's reasonable to say that you want the floodplain marked, but I saw case law referenced in the A and R that indicated to me that you couldn't actually use that to deny an A and R.
Unless it's access.
No, they had a case of.
Or where the bridge went over?
Not even a bridge, they had a case of a I forget what town it was in, but its frontage was on a road that seasonally floods every year, for an average, it said of thirty-three and a half days each year. And the planning board denied, based on they didn't have good access, and the land court reversed them and said, no, that's okay.
Well, we can still, our answer is to show it on the plan, we can have discussions.
That's what I said, you you can still require it, I guess.
I think you should.
It's just, if you um, you have to be careful if you turn down on the basis of that.
Yeah. I I did, one of the other ones too, that they were able to build a bridge going across, so that could not be considered lucidary access.
Mm-hmm.
Unfortunately, getting our conservation agents to approve bridges here. getting our conservation agents to approve bridges here is a little more difficult. So I just think show it on a plan and we discuss it.
Yeah. Okay.
I think some of the comments from the from the uh from our past um earlier um meetings were that if it's written on here, then it 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 may not be us because we understand it, but if a future planning board comes and is there, will they understand that it's not a something they can uh turn down an A and R on if if it's something that's required for somebody to add um to the A and R?
To do what Rob did and do research and on the A and R process and find that same case law that Rob came across. I don't think um.
And there could be new case law. That's the problem with this is with the A and R. It's all driven by whatever the courts have ruled. Yeah.
I mean, I think if there's problems with with this language, that this is what people are going to refer to. Um, that's problematic as as a whole. You shouldn't have to refer to case law to be able to refer to this.
We shouldn't have, but this doesn't. Yeah, that's the only thing it supports why we need to make this in the What's interesting is the case law does not support all the requirements that we had on our.
I I mean, I I I I would wording that suggested items in that case.
Well, this one we this one we think we can we can have.
Yes.
It's just what whether buildings and wetlands should fall under the umbrella of access. But at the same time, I just, you know, I hear last meeting Joyce was the one speaking about what she did, what she did as a land surveyor creating these plans, and she always put all the structures on.
Most of the plans I've seen come in have them.
Have the structure.
And it has been on our forum for years to have those.
So they interpret survey.
Right, right.
Yeah.
So so that's why I just reverted it back to the way it was previously worded. So it's like not a change.
Um, and really, the only thing you're adding is the access
Yeah.
section for.
And and converting floodplanes and stone walls into the access piece. Uh.
For new lots only.
Yeah.
Right, because it had come up because we did say stone walls drawn and then it was questioned of why weren't all the stone walls on there? Why weren't all the outbuildings, so you know it's falling on? Because we said structures and it's it's not part of the A and R process, you know, that it's hard. So I think.
What what qualifies for the term not a buildable lot to be labeled?
Uh, frontage. One of these things, frontage, you don't have access, or it's too small. So then it should be labeled not buildable.
So that that's the criteria.
For us, anyway.
So Steph, I I liked the idea that you mentioned of moving the wetlands to item D to to bump it into number nine as item D. Um, because I felt like it sort of emphasizes more that our concern is access, which is the thing that we have this the like more stable footing on. Um.
Yeah, I think it it passes the test procedurally a little better, although your personal preference is to know where there's wetlands on it.
For sure.
But I don't have a yeah, but I don't have a jurisdictional reason to be able to. So, yeah, we can. Let me just see what that looks like.
You just wonder how all these other towns were requiring all these other aspects, because I mean, we pulled through and I had towns that said, you know, swimming pools, you know, tennis courts, all these things had to be on the plan. Did people do them or did they waive them? And it says this is what you shall put in to submit plan.
So now so now the new number nine has four subsections, one of which is the wetlands. And then if we're going to do this, then I don't want just wetlands. We had uh vernal, if we're going to change it, I was stopping myself from changing the bullet. Um, but if we're going to put it in here, then I want um wetlands, vernal pools, or buffer areas, I think is what I had, subject to state or local jurisdiction. So it's not just the wetlands, but it's like what are their buffers and then vernal pools and other.
Border vegetated wetlands.
Yes. So I just I wanted to expand it, but I was stopping myself because I didn't want to change it. But if we're putting it in here, I'd like to I'd like to also suggest adding those.
I think that's good. It's just as Ron had mentioned, there's certain things we when we can have it shown, but if there's just enough.
Yeah.
Then you still endorse it. If it's only a buffer zone on there.
So buffer areas or buffer zones?
Um. It's buffer zones.
Yeah.
Cool. It's like all related buffers. I don't know. Just close enough. Yeah.
Well, that triggers the kind of.
Well, not for the A and R, but for the passion. Yes. Okay. All right. Yeah, yeah. Good call, Brett.
I think that was the only.
Rob, when you were uh becoming a PhD on A and R process in Massachusetts, I think the one of the things that came up was that you were not happy with the either or language, and I wondered if that.
Yeah, um. I actually ended up looking at the Lowell A and R submission document, which is very clear in some ways. Um, it it doesn't actually have the whole list of detailed requirements that we have about what has to be on the plan, but um it basically, if you look at just the the MGL, it it talks as if every A and R is dividing a lot into multiple lots.
Hmm.
But we all know that sometimes it's just cutting off a piece that is not meant to be a buildable lot, and that is considered valid. And even though the 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 MGL required don't say anything about it. It's right in the A and R handbook. And um in the Lowell one, it mentioned something like one of the one of the possible reasons for approval is is they say although it is a division of land that the two or more parcels, only one of said parcels can be defined as a lot, i.e. having definite boundaries and used or available for use as the site of one or more buildings. Um, so that was the distinction I was trying to make in that like uh if if this A and R is actually cutting a lot into multiple pieces, then each piece either satisfies the frontage requirement or it is not planned to be a buildable lot. And there's actually I believe it's part of law and it's also mentioned in the Lowell one, an A and R cannot create a valid building lot by dividing it from another parcel rendered non-conforming by such division, which and that's a whole really strange aspect. But back before you were here, Heidi, uh when Gino was planner, there was an example of that. And I can't remember whether it was an actual lot in Sherburne or whether it was just an example Gino had from somewhere else, but it was an act. There was some actual case law that ended up being referenced that it basically said that it was valid to take an existing lot with a house on it and divide it in two such that the lot that the house is on is now actually under the required area. But the fact that that is now non-compliant basically says the other piece can't be used to to build on or to make another piece compliant, which just seems like incredibly weird.
All right, I have.
But there's actual case law on.
All right. So I have a question, one that is probably coming to this board. I'm trying to figure out how it's going to work. We had uh it went to the ZBA. The ZBA granted a variance from the sixty-foot setback line because the street frontage had two hundred feet or wherever it was made, the exact one. The sixty-foot setback had one hundred and ninety-nine point four-five or something. It was less than a foot, but it did not have two hundred because of how the curve went on it. And the people had two frontage. They had they they thought they had bought two parcels of land and they wanted to divide it, but only one would have two hundred feet, both would have two hundred feet of the street. Going one would have two hundred feet at the set at the sixty-foot setback, the other would have one hundred and ninety-nine something.
Great.
So ZBA gave them the variance that they will allow that to be a conforming lot. So if they come to us now, or to you guys, and to divide that one bigger lot into two parcels, how do you handle that when you say like, how do you label it? Because it does not meet our.
But I remember a non-conforming A and R years ago that it was a non-conforming lot pre-existing, which maybe could be said for this case. And the A and R did not make it any less conforming. I don't remember what the conformance issue was, but the A and R did not affect its conformance at all in a positive or negative way. And so that A and R, I remember Gino saying was okay to vote to endorse because the non-conformance was not a result of the A and R lot changes.
It would be. If they if they had.
But but you said ZBA granted a variance for the lot for the.
To right, for that parcel to say that they're allowing it, but they haven't divided lots yet. So I do just been right endorsed with ZBA various.
Yeah, something like that.
And you're not supposed to have any notes on the A and R. So that's what I'm kind of like thinking about and how it's going to play out. So I thought maybe you would.
Maybe you could recommend that their plan include reference to the ZBA variants?
I think it's going to have to because it it's you will be creating a non-conformity.
Um, is isn't that what the or because line wouldn't be or because the ZBA has indicated that both lots are conforming?
Yeah.
Would that work? That we can do that?
I think that makes sense to me.
I just wanted you to have to put that note on the plan.
Yeah, it has to be on the plans too, because this application doesn't with the plan.
Right. This is doesn't get filed. It would be our notes to say unless they did it, but I don't know what you put on the actual plan.
As a general note.
Yeah.
Yeah, the the thing I don't the other thing that I I think I mentioned at the last meeting that I I still am not totally clear on is that we talk about in our application, frontage with an area. Now, the 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 actual statute and the A and R really just concentrate on frontage and access. That is absolutely within our discretion to determine whether access over that frontage is adequate and everything. Um, but it basically says that, you know, other zoning is not in the purview of the board.
The state.
But it is reasonable to have notations to at least certainly the notation that says we have not determined that this is a buildable lot.
So.
And they even in the in the handbook, they talk about having specific notations that say this lot is only to be used for, you know, some purpose or whatever and not buildable. But um then somewhere in there, it talked about how we could consider dimensional requirements, but not use requirements. And I was like, no, but it it's not clear to me that we're actually allowed to consider area.
So you are our A and R expert.
Yeah.
And when these come in, Heidi's going to call you.
Exactly. So I'm thinking, Rob, what was that case?
I said it's um, well, I can, you know, sort of show that's a but like when I look at the Lowell one, which seems like very well done, it says nothing about area in it.
Which is interesting. It's town council told me that we do look at area that our zoning area. It's, you know, we're making one acre lots in RA, we're making two acre lots in RB.
And.
We can't say that a one acre lot in RC is built was.
Yeah.
Endorseable.
The A and R handbook even specifically talks about planning board might still be required to approve an A and R when they know the lot is not buildable. And they just mentioned that, of course, you know, the planning board should notify the building inspector of this. And there there's this whole concern and they allow notations because there's this whole concern that somebody would buy the lot without realizing it's not buildable.
Correct.
But um.
So I'm I'm hoping that if the S A and R does come to the planning board, like where they have all those little notes on the sides that 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 the engineer says this has been voted by the ZBA or whatever, to speak weak. It can form like so that it would be a conforming lot and then we're just voting on that conforming lot. It comes already from a surveyor who would vote who helped and would not bring anything else from it.
So the lot hasn't been divided yet, but the ZBA has told them that, yes, if you divide it in that fashion.
That variance.
We will give you a variance. Okay.
So if they're giving the variance to we, we don't have to give them the A and R?
And they have to.
They have to. They're they're that's why they're having a variance. If 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 we give them A and R, they wouldn't need a variance.
No, they have nothing to do with each other.
No, yes, that you want them to sell it. You have to have a divided lot to.
You have to divide the lot too to sell one of them to somebody and keep the other.
But one of them is a non-buildable.
That's our role. But then it is it's up to the zoning board as to whether you can ever issue a building permit for it.
Kind of endorse it with a not a buildable lot stamp on it, note on it, right? And then the ZBA has to undo that through a variance process.
See, that's why I was confused. If they went to the ZBA who granted that and I said, but yes, I don't know, just like the different steps, like now that we know that they did it. So if they don't.
Yeah, I think they don't support it. If they don't submit that ZBA action with their application, then we would put not a buildable lot on.
If we didn't know, but I think they will. I mean, because like they sent me the letter of G sent, just so you know, they can see they have run of that variance. So that's why I think it's coming at some point.
Yeah, I understand that, but I also feel like as a board, it would be our responsible ability to either see the note on the plan that refers to the variance.
I'm hoping it does, yeah.
Or if it's not there to to indicate on the plan when we sign it that it's not a buildable lot. I mean, I, yeah, I know.
I don't know, just a heads up.
Right. And then the then the ZBA could always override it with their variance.
Exactly, exactly. Yeah.
You know, the the handbook makes it clear that we don't we don't have to declare lots as non-buildable. We we should always just, we can include that boilerplate statement that says
Not not clarification of.
We are not making a determination that the lot is buildable.
Right. We have that in our automatic statement.
Yeah.
Yeah, but.
But it doesn't be the frontage or area requirements. Can you do that?
But if it's absolutely clear that it's not buildable, like if it's like an isolated piece of land with no frontage that you just true, you know, swapping to a neighbor or something, then they they suggest a different kind of notation for that.
Yes.
Totally definitive.
Like the Nathan Hill, they have that triangle in the middle, that's piece swapped back and forth between two two foot almost.
Um.
Okay, so any changes to the form, Rob, as a result of your research?
Well, I don't know. I was kind of hoping Heidi would have the definite definitive opinion on it. You're the one who was at law school, right?
You were much law, you were in law school. It's not your total fault.
So it's not clear. I don't it's not clear to me whether. It's not clear to me whether we should have the width and area. Requirements in there or not.
Since town council had mentioned it to me that that's what we were allowed to use our decision on. And that's what's been on our plans before. I I would feel comfortable going with what they said.
Okay. So maybe I I could go back and look in the angle, but maybe that falls in the idea of you can look at. Dimensional requirements from zoning, but you can't look at use requirements.
It might, it just seemed to me like they they were very clear that there were three things we look at and that was it.
Okay.
So, and those, that was part of the three. And it's two, all the towns seem to have something like that in them. On the A N R applications seem to have. Address those.
Okay, any, any other? Changes to propose from anyone else on this form?
Not for me.
Grass, you one more time, you can, you can continue that.
Oh, I just wanna close it.
Right?
We don't need to do this for a fourth meeting in a row.
Well. Do we still have this this whole thing with the either because? I don't know, that just doesn't.
Okay, so I'll say the same thing I said last meeting. Go, go propose something. Then we can continue the hearing and hear your proposal.
Or we voted.
Well, I mean, I don't wanna cut it off if Rob feels strongly about it, but I also don't think that. Talking about it as a group, somebody needs to put something on paper to to be considered by the planning board. So if you feel strongly about it, let's continue the hearing and you can draft something. Heidi can send this version around.
Mary's calling me.
All right. Well, then. Let me continue that, but I think I might wanna propose. Uh, pulling one or two items from. Maybe the Lowell one and it it just seems much more clear the way they've done it. Says.
Okay, so Heidi's gonna send out this word document and you can mark it up. With what you're proposing as language, yeah?
Okay.
And then if you wanna send it so that I can circulate it before our meeting. Because we. We can get information, we just can't have discussion about it until the meeting, but it would help to get it, I think, before the meeting.
Okay.
Rob, you need one to discuss with Heidi, just make sure that whatever you propose works for her. And then the rest of us could look at it at our meeting. Discuss it at our meeting, you look at it before. Right, so we're continuing this, yeah?
And I'm gonna suggest we not continue till to October seventh, because that's gonna be a very lengthy meeting. Um, there's fifty twos on the list, just so you know. So I think this will have to be for the October twenty first meeting. And the same then with the regulations, because until we get form. Done, you can't get the regulations to match it.
Right, so I move that we uh continue this hearing to. Uh, October the twenty first. Shall we say it at seven thirty? Gives us a little time. Any, do I hear a second?
We'll have to be second.
Second.
Okay, so remove the second and finally, all those in favor, Steph.
Hi.
Jim.
Hi.
Brett.
Hi.
Rob.
Hi.
And I think I'll come in I as well, okay? This meeting has been, uh, this um, hearing has been continued. And time is seven fifty seven.
What's it, what's the date we would be continuing?
October twenty first.
Seven thirty.
Okay, great.
The next item on the agenda is item number one for um annual town meeting. Uh, twenty twenty six stormwater management plan.
Right, so Joyce hasn't had time to look into it. She surveyed, she's got some ideas from other towns. Um, the. Inclination right now is to say what we have for our bylaw and regulations and make it townwide. Right now, it's only for the M S four district that this kicks in. And then also look at two levels. Over an acre and under an acre and under an acre have less restrictive requirements than the over an acre requirement for. Management. What is what a lot of towns have done. What those management plans are is what she's trying to come up with right now and and between her and Chris, we'll try and get something. Um, we'll aim for the October twenty first meeting. Probably to get some initial. Drafts going, that's the. Where it stands right now.
Okay. Moving on to item one B, then housekeeping items updates.
Yeah, I have an update on that, um.
You have an update on that?
Sorry?
You have an update on the updates?
I do. Um, at the last meeting, we talked about lot width and lot shape. And uh, my. Item from that meeting was to identify some towns that could be researched for lot shape regulations. But when I typed in regulate lot shape in Massachusetts into my web browser, what popped up was this very comprehensive P D F. Developed by. Pioneer Institute for Public Policy Research. And it was done in two thousand and four, so it's dated, but. It was so relevant, I couldn't help but share it here, let me. Share. There this. Okay. So this, this, where I found this was on a New Hampshire towns website. But it seems to be all of the towns in Massachusetts, whether or not they had lot shape regulations. At the time of the research and what the regulations were. And the um. Top. Section here basically says that the most common ways that. Lot shape is regulated. Now again, this is to like keep lot shapes regular and not have like. Fork time or flagpole shaped lots. Um, so this says that they. Tend tend to fall into dimensional regulations that address lot shape. So the circle test and perimeter. Circle tests were the ones that the planning board had explored a couple of years ago. It has to do with like the diameter of a circle at the frontage line or at the setback line and. They had, that you could go no narrower than X, Y, Z. I don't even remember. It was so confusing to look at the circle test. Um, lot shape regulations, um. You you can, you can. You you place a circle at a of a given diameter, maybe it's seventy five percent of the minimum required frontage. And you can place it tangent to the frontage. Without crossing any side lot lines. Or passed along a continuous line from the lot frontage to the rear yard setback. Without the circumference intersecting any lot lines. You're basically taking the circle and like moving it around and looking at where intersects lot lines. And that seemed extraordinarily confusing to me, even at the time that the planning board was discussing it years ago and I was just taking the minutes. I was having a hard time like understanding this circle test concept. But the other bucket into which lot shape. Regulations fall is perimeter to aerial ratios. So the perimeter of a lot. Is how the distance of its edge. And then the area is like square footage, right? And so like, if you have a perimeter that has really irregular like forked time shapes. We're gonna have a really long perimeter for a relatively small area, right? So what this does is it kind of looks at how much, how squiggly is your boundary? Compared to the total area that's contained within the boundary. Um, and so. This feels a lot more approachable to me. It feels like a formula that could be followed when you think about what's the ratio. Of so of some version of perimeter to area now. It it says here, some equations are algebraically rearranged to. The perimeter squared over the area. Give the certain X. So the, so. So one way you could think about it, so I mean, either way, it's like a perimeter. It it, I do find it in a lot of the regulations in this particular research paper, but. If you think of like a square, that's got a really tight perimeter on an area. And then if you were to take that same area and elongate it into a rectangle, into a skinny rectangle. Like you'd end up with a much longer perimeter for that area. And so this perimeter squared. Is over the area, over the area of the lot equals X and X is called the lot shape factor. The lot shape factor. So if I um. Search this P D F for shape factor, right? I was just kind of curious. We can see. This to go away. Um, that it shows up in. Bellingham, the the lot shape factor in excess of twenty two. Okay. Um. In Belmont, the lot shape factor in excess of twenty two. Uh. In Blackstone, it's a lot shape factor of thirty for really lot, really huge lots, but twenty two for other lots. So it's like fairly standardized as far as like what. Municipalities seem to be doing, um. So anyway, just. You know, it just seems like it's, here's another one, Hingham, lot shape factor of twenty two. And it's much, it, to me, it feels a lot more straightforward, um. So, I don't know, I. Go into all of this, can can I go in like a level deeper here? Okay, so what I did was I looked at some A N Rs. Where we have. Um. That we've looked, that we've. Right, and so. Here I did lot shape factor, so I did the length, the width and and the area and the perimeter. And so I just took like a square lot. And I did the.
Will you try and show an example?
Oh, am I not showing it? We share this.
So just I carry twenty two is the lowest, so we'd want more than twenty?
No, you want less than twenty two.
Less than twenty.
Right.
Not exceeding the numerical value of twenty two.
Okay, yeah. So let me share again, I'm sorry. Getting this on one screen. Okay, share. So I took. And I probably need to pull up the Greenwood Homes. Uh. Or I'm sorry, the sixty five farm road homes. Well, I won't, I won't go into the specifics of it, but. I basically looked at a square lot, rectangular lot, so I took a three hundred by three hundred foot lot. And that has a lot shape factor of sixteen and then a rectangular lot three hundred by nine hundred feet. It's totally arbitrary numbers. I was just trying to get a sense of like. What is this lot shape factor? And I was a lot shape factor of twenty one. And remember the threshold was like twenty two ish was kind of the what we were seeing. So I took the sixty five farm road A N R where we divided. The existing home lot, which was kind of, if I remember, it was kind of like teardrop shaped. And then there was like another one that was non-buildable that started over here, didn't have the frontage. And it went like huge flagpole and then up into a large buildable area back here, right? And then there was another A N R lot. From the third one, but the deep was lot three A, lot four A and lot five A. So I have them documented throughout the spreadsheet. And I calculated. The perimeter, right? You can see all my calculations here in the Excel. I really went line by line around the perimeter and counted up. For these lots, all the different segments of the perimeter all the way around. And then perimeter squared and then the area in square feet, which is um. In in the middle, it's like lot free A sixty two thousand three hundred ninety seven square feet, right? Um, and what I found was that. This lot five A, which was the non-buildable lot that had that really skinny entrance and then the huge area in the back. That had a lot shape factor of sixty nine. And then the next one, which also has sort of like a flagpole shape to it. And I uh. I don't have it, I I I have it, but I have it handwritten, but it had a lot shape factor of thirty eight. Whereas the residential lot with the existing house. Um, wasn't a regular rectangle per se, um, but it had a lot shape factor that was well under the twenty two. It was in a lot shape factor of eighteen. I'm gonna see actually if I can pull up the. Oh, the A N R. Just so we can in our plan. Um. Just so, so I can remind you guys what these lots, oh, here it is, perfect. Okay, so let me stop this share. I'm. When I have a second screen, everything feels a lot easier. Okay, so here's the A N R that I was talking about. And if I zoom. And hide floating medium controls, because I can't see anything. Zoom in, okay. So lot, lot three A is is this one, okay? So sure, you can see the sixty two thousand three hundred ninety seven square feet. But the lot perimeter goes like this. You guys can see my hand on the mouse, right? Because all the way around, it's very irregular shape, right? Lot four A is this one, it's much more sort of like rectangular, if you will. And then lot five A is this giant one back here that starts over here with the right with setback. Uh, sorry, starts with frontage that has this really skinny flagpole and that has this really irregularly shaped area back here. That goes all the way out like this, right? So so these calculations that I did, now I have to. Stop and share and switch over to. The other document again. Um. So again, lot five A was that super big one that went around the back. And then lot three A was the one that was like fairly irregularly shaped and lot four A was the one that was, you know, a consolidated lot. And so I was just, I was just experimenting because I was curious, what is this lot shape factor? How does the factor of twenty two affect what we've seen and? I'm just putting this out there. It's a, my next, this is highlighted because my next thought is to go to the Greenwood Homes and look at that one. Because that was another A N R where we broke into multiple lots. I think they were fairly uniform in shape, so I would just be curious if they all fell in the twenty two. Um, but it was just, you know, plans at my disposal to just look at and play with and. Um, just wanted to let folks know that I was thinking about it and. We've talked about lot shape as a potential update, um. I know that, you know, it's. Anyway.
Well, I have some thoughts on this.
Yeah.
Um. You might not like them stuff. Um. I'm not crazy about our current regulation, because lot width seems to be like, there's this lot width and building line stuff, which I find. Extremely difficult to interpret what the requirements are and um. I.
I don't think that would change, though. This is separate from lot width.
Well. If you look at the details, but then there's, they're sort of trying to. Address the same thing. And. Um. It talks about the lot with being maintained. Min- a minimum with being maintained from the frontage back to the building line. And these things are not. I'm not sure that they're precisely enough defined that you couldn't end up with arguments where the. You know, somebody would draw this and say, this is the building line and this is the minimum lot width and somebody else would. Look at the same outline and draw them differently. I I'm. I I think there may be ambiguities in it. I actually. Who adopt either this circle thing or this. Perimeter ratio thing, either one is a major. Change, a major. Restriction that we don't have now.
I think we have the circle one, or something, some part of it.
I don't think we have the circle one. It was talked about by the planning board years ago.
Okay.
I think John Higley was trying to um, kind of. Anyway.
I actually. I actually kind of prefer the more circle based definition, even though they may be a little bit harder to demonstrate whether it's met or not. It's it's kind of very clear what the intent is in this. Um. The the issue I have with the. Perimeter ratio is that. Um. There might be circumstances. Where you have a person perfectly reasonable lot. It's got full frontage. And it's got a good solid width from there back to where the house is. But it happens to be. On the edge of like some wetlands or unbuildable land. On the edge of like some wetlands or unbuildable land or whatever, so that the lot just goes way, way back. So you know, you're in a two acre minimum zoning area, but this is a. Sixteen acre lot that's got. You know. It actually includes a perfect two acre lot in the front, and then it's got fourteen acres of ledge back there. And something like that could easily be a shape. Which would be invalid according to the perimeter ratio. But we would have, I I can't imagine we'd have any objections to.
Right, so there's there's a couple of things that, one is that we do have special provisions for rear lots. Which is where you have like an access and then a large buildable area in the back, there are provisions in our zoning bylaws that are especially for that. Okay, but the other piece is that. What some towns have done is set. Set this. Area perimeter ratio situation only for lots of a certain size. Like, three acres are smaller, two acres are smaller. And when you, where you have like a large farm that may have, like there's a farm behind my house, and it has. Parts of its property line that go out to different streets, right? And it, so it kind of looks like an octopus. Because it's got like these little property strips that in case they ever wanted access. And that's that's a reasonable ask for a very large property. So large properties. Could, if we were to consider some of this, be exempted from that. Because presumably on a large parcel, you'd be able to find, you you're not. You're not trying to shoe horn in a bunch of random. It 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 seems like the 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 intention and the use is different for a very large parcel.
If you go back to that document that you showed us to begin with, it had the first paragraph, which had the circles, and it had the second paragraph with the uh, the the parameter area. Equation. Are they both there so that both can be used?
And the the research project, and it documents a snapshot in time, which was two thousand four, so it's a little dated, like I said, but the the top. Portion of the document just describes the general. Trends, like what's what's common between towns.
Those two paragraphs that you referred to. You had the paragraph with the circle description, then right after that, you have the paragraph with the perimeter prescription. So are they, are they suggesting you choose one of the two, or are they suggesting to use both of them depending on a given scenario or a given?
You're just saying of of the towns that they. Survey that regulate shape of lots, the regulations tend to fall into one of these two types of regulations. So I I don't, I don't, it it would be a little bit. It, I I don't I don't see a situation in which you would employ both for different.
No, you would choose one or the other, that's the one that was my. You have both in your regs, but you you choose one or the other to to base it on.
See why you couldn't have both of them, but it sounds like extra onerous to to prove.
Wouldn't have to do both for all of them, you know, a little bit like you said that, you know, if you had um. You know, uh, uh, anything over uh, two or three acres. You know, over the re- the minimum required acreage, then you can use the circle if you prefer versus the perimeter, if that worked out better for you. But if you were within, you know, within the um. The area that w- within the zoning, then you would have to use a perimeter calculation.
So, 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 um. Rob, I'm not trying to. To. Argue what you're saying, but I do think that for that specific example you gave, where there's like a rear lot, that we do have regulations that address that. And also a large lot, so those were the, that's kind of what I heard you referring to as. Situations where this might not work, but I'm definitely like. If uh, if you can explain the circle thing to me. Um, because I I just have always just struggled to. Fully understand that, like, so.
A sample one, you haven't really meant to say that. A lot can't neck down. All that much between the frontage. And. In some cases, in in one of them, it says all the way to the rear of the lot, I know.
Yes.
That seems.
So if you were to look at, for example, that Farm Road A and R, though, this is just about the minimum required frontage. And you could probably run a circle down the driveway and then around. And then on that like weird shaped lot.
But it talked about, I mean, I'm just saying the town, the example you had, it talked about. Having a number of like seventy or eighty percent of the required frontage, which is. Big, so if it's like two hundred feet, that would be like a hundred and fifty foot. Swap diameter that you gotta hold going back, which we allow it to go down to. What, seventy five or something?
Fifty, fifty.
Fifty, fifty. So. Um. You know, I. I don't know, I mean, the whole intent, it seems to be like to prevent what people refer to as pork chop lots with just. That's right, you've got like a skinny little driveway or. In some cases, it looks like, you know, you may have a shared driveway running over a different lot. That um. Allows you to squeeze in a lot with just. Oh. It it seems to. I don't know, I'm I'm not even sure what what the intent is. I I see what the intent sort of is. I I'm not sure we really. I don't know, it's so different from what we. Specify now that. I'm. I don't know, it's. I guess. Well.
Some of the challenges of having a skinny lot, right, is that. You're getting your area that's required for like. One acre zoning or two acre zoning, right? You've got your one acre or your two acre, and if you get a really skinny layout. Then you find a spot where your house can go that meets all the different setbacks that's required, right? You wedge your house into this little portion of the skinny lot. And then you've got to put your septic system somewhere. Right? So maybe you find another wedge where your septic can just be within those boundaries. But then what if something happens? What if you need a. Your septic fails. And you need to. Put in a new septic system, there's not, there's not literally a place in the parcel that it can be. To meet the setbacks, right, from your neighbors? So it's just the 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 irregular lot shapes, or the really skinny lots, really cut down on flexibility. With respect to all the different buffers that our town has established, um. But uh.
My next door neighbor has one of those. But. I don't know, I mean, septic system is engineered so that you can completely rebuild it within the. Original outline, that's the way we do them now, where you could put in a new set of trenches in between the existing trenches. And so they they're all basically. Double area in that regard. But. They have a lot that didn't perk. And the developer has. It's like a ten foot long strip going out. Like a hundred and fifty, two hundred feet. And then a septic field at the end of it. And. That got a building permit thirty years ago, so.
Uh, well, I mean, it's. It's up to the board ultimately to to vote, so it's good to have these discussions for sure.
Yeah, I'm just thinking it may be. It it's just something that concerns me to put in regulation that might. Is so different from. It's an additional constraint. That is. So different from what we have now, but um. Okay, yeah, let's let's discuss it.
Okay, and it's um. Okay, let's, yeah, let's just keep the conversation going. Definitely, if you're more interested in the circle idea, I would like to hear more about that, for sure. Because that's an alternative approach, but it seems like lot with. Regulating lot shape, not width, regulating lot shape does seem to be fairly common. So although it is different from what we have. Um, it's definitely not unprecedented locally.
You know what might be good to do too, is to look into towns that have septic.
Yeah.
And what they did for lot width, because the towns you mentioned have. Would you have infrastructure? So that let. It would like trying to reach an area that perks. It's more of an issue for us versus some of the other towns. So. Not to take away the value of people's land if they can't get something to perk, I can see where Rob's got an issue there, but. I see how towns have septic, how they've handled their lot.
So I just looked up Carlisle, because I have this whole database right in front of me.
Yeah.
And uh, they do an area to perimeter ratio, but it's not perimeter squared over area, it's sixteen times the area over the perimeter times two. So, so it's a different formula.
I'd be curious to know now what the numbers.
On the like, yes, on the other, right, on the other lots, while you're looking.
Right, because that to me would be more realistic. To see.
As an, as an example, right? Sorry, it's Carlisle.
So, so, yeah.
Which statement?
Harvard. In 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 this part of the country, I think we call it Harvard.
Oh, so Stowe also has a area perimeter and it's the same formula, sixteen times area over two times perimeter.
So I wonder if this is different for septic, if that gives a different.
Interesting, interesting thought.
Yeah.
Um. And Harvard does not regulate lot shape.
Okay. Alright, so I'll try and come up some of the towns that have septic. But I think that would be a good.
Yeah.
And then one of those other numbers, I'd be curious to know now if that.
Yeah.
Does that make some of those more viable?
Alright.
And this is just to start getting ideas of what we want to get on the warrants. Do you want to bring up that other, the? ADU list? I tried to do a condensed one from you, like we took several ones off that we know we had already addressed from people's comments. To see if there's anything we still know.
But you can send, did you send that out?
To that, for this moment, I did, I thought I said the housekeeping.
You did, okay, I see it. Oh, no, that's nine two, hold on, let me go to nine sixteen. Um, yes, you did.
Carlisle, let's start really.
Yeah, so what use? Oh, it's one page now. Let me. Uh, just. Oh, zoom. Show them. This one.
So just, I think we can still. Decide if we want to talk about. And and I asked Chris to look at this, I sent it to him and I haven't gotten feedback, so that we need his input for a lot of these.
Yeah.
But I thought the ones that I kind of want to look at was. The uh, number twenty, three point two twenty seven, the low apart, low or moderate income ADUs.
Yeah.
How does the board want us, does the board want to address that at all or not? Because what I found out is that. Um. The, our bylaw says that this category has to count on our S H I and follow the lift program, the local initiative program. The local initiative program is different from the state's ADU program in that their ADU has to be an in-dwelling ADU. Can't be a standalone ADU, so they allow the buy right ones, but it has to be an in-dwelling one, which is why in our number twenty seven, we say that if you don't. Um, that if you don't renew, you have to remove the kitchen from that, and we always said, well, if you build a separate dwelling and you move the kitchen, we do it separate dwelling. It's because this number twenty seven follows lift, which is. In dwelling, so that's how you can remove it and just becomes rooms in the house. And so that was a different thing that I hadn't realized, and. In order to get in the S H I, you do have to have. A deed restriction or some contract that is long term, like a thirty year restriction, so for us to say, we're going to give you a two year special permit. You can come back and renew again after two years, does not meet the qualifications to get on the S H I list. Unless that. They're gonna want the owner puts in a deed restriction for thirty years, in which case, why are they coming back and asking for renewals of a special permit? So I found that to be a big disconnect, and when you actually looked at what the qualifications were. And what we're requiring people to do. So. Does it make sense to even keep this in there when it is so onerous for people? And for us to try and figure out what to do?
I think that, yeah, I think one argument for taking it out is that. We were very intentional about the other types of ADUs.
Right.
And how they interact with each other. And this could be done within the other ADUs.
Yes.
And it still wouldn't count towards S H I, right? So it's like, doesn't change what can be done, it just.
Yeah, I I kind of, this, this was done at a time when. They did not have, it was the apartments, housekeeping units were supposed to only be for family members, and they were trying to find a way to. Say you could have staff or rent to someone else, and they thought, well, then if they made it low income, it'd be a win-win. But it wasn't, looking at standalone dwellings was before the whole ADUs came out, it was even before inclusionary zoning, housing. Uh, by law came in, that I kind of feel we have other vehicles now to add. Items onto the S H I. So.
Do we have anybody currently that is doing this?
Um, so this, Bob Mercer brought up to do this at his Washington Street Homes, went to the Z B A. But he didn't want to do a deed restriction, and I happened to go in the Z B A hearing, so I wanted to follow it, and I did bring up, I said, well. How can it count on the S H I, which is a permanent by law? And C B A Chair Zach McBride said, oh, we'll have to look into that, that was a good question, and when we looked into it, we found out you did have to do a deed restriction. And Bob has pulled those permits and he's going to switch them to. Twelve hundred special permit.
Okay, so we, so it's not even really usable for the intention.
No, so that's why we kind of.
Nobody in history, there's nobody that's currently uh, doing.
No. No, because. They'd be having to come back to, for every two years, the Z B A, and they had, they weren't aware, you know, they was new to that.
Well, that was my concern, that if we get rid of something that somebody had, that could be an issue.
Now, the the special permit. Has to actually be renewed, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
But the deed, but but you need a thirty year deed restriction.
No, but I mean, for just a twelve hundred square foot.
Yes, yes, right.
And there seems to be like a. An assumption here that it's gonna always get renewed, isn't there?
Yes, that is true.
But you're not dealing with, our special permit one doesn't, a couple, twelve hundred square foot one doesn't have any low income requirement, requirements.
Yeah.
So this needs a lot of work, or it should be removed, because to have people think we have a third category of the ADUs right now, when. As it's written, it's not usable.
Yeah. I would, I mean, I would be in favor of removing it, having looked at it a little bit in previous meetings, so I'd be in favor of removing it, and we don't have, we're not voting on anything.
No, 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 but we're just, it would be, it would be on.
But I I second your straw poll.
So and then the other housekeeping items, we really need to get Chris Kenny's input on the two fifty six versus two hundred square feet. And some of those calculations on the roof line, whether he thinks that's. Something that we should be doing or not. Um, also.
That was on accessory buildings.
I. One was on accessory buildings, the two hundred and fifty versus two fifty six, which Michael Newman feels two fifty six is a builder's number to work with, sheets of plywood that can be built versus cutting it. And he had a similar thing with the angle of the roof, a single story up to sixteen.
Instead of one and a half stories, which could be nebulous.
Right. So I need, I need, really need Chris's input on that, and also to change commercial or construction, those terms. I'd want to know from him what that really meant.
Yeah.
The other, one that we've had, um, one of the residents is the. That the shed can have an automobile in it, right now the sheds allow tractors, motorcycles, but it has, we have a restriction of by law, but no automobile is replaced in. The accessory sheds. And one of the residents feels we should strike that, doesn't feel that's right. The concern I think we have to look at is you're only allowed so many garages.
Someone brought, I think, was it, probably brought that up at the last meeting. Someone brought it up. Yeah, that it was, you're only allowed a three car garage, and so you, could you have a three car garage, and then a shed over here that. Allows for automobiles, that might have been the.
Right, but.
Seven, three car garage and shed, though, you put in the tractors and all the.
Double three car garage and shed there, you put in the tractors and all the other things and how different is that from? Car.
Yeah, but there's a specific intent that you don't have.
More than four.
Indoor storage for four.
Yeah.
Four vehicles on your lot, which again, I am a neighbor on the other side, has exactly that for garage days that. Somehow they got their building permit. It wasn't.
Oh, okay.
There's no variance, but they built it anyway.
Right, so I guess that, you know, or you can say automobile is allowed as long as there's no more than three. Store, car storages on one, if they have a two car garage, they should be able to have a shed and put a car in the shed.
I would just, I would say it as, you know, a. A shed that is used for the store that. Is designed to be used for the storage of an automobile, should be considered a garage. Under the meaning of.
The bylaws.
Whatever that bylaw is.
Right, and then if you have a two car garage, then it's fine, because that's your third.
Yeah.
Something like that.
So it's some kind of language like that in there.
Um, can I ask a question about that? So I think of people with a lot of garage bays as like probably car collectors, but is that not what happens? Do people like rent the spaces to people for parking vehicles or do they keep fleets there or what what happens if you let them have more?
Well, we're not supposed to have that.
Right, I know, but I'm just wondering why, like what what bad happens if they had ten, like if they've got space?
It's a car collector?
Oh, it just, I think, I think there's like, um, an.
I thought it was a concern about business uses, like if people really started storing their.
That was.
Fleets of cars.
Yeah, I could see that.
We had a neighbor who was essentially running a used car business out of residents in our neighborhood.
Right.
Without. Without, you know, really meeting the state's requirements of what a used car dealer is supposed to make.
I mean, I think there's something to be said too for disincentives to additional automobiles, just for an energy. Uh, and and from an energy perspective, like. What, you know, not disincentivizing a family having, making it easy to have six, six automobiles is. You know, it just, we don't, we don't need that, right? We've got.
Well, how does it work? How does it work if we are now allowed an A D U? So now there's another. Dwelling unit, do they get a certain number of garage bays with that A D U?
No, not, not necessarily. I mean, if they added another.
Now you have two families, you have, you know, hus- let's just say husband and wife in the main unit and a husband and wife in a. A D U, you got four vehicles there. You know, and we'd rather have those four vehicles outside or would you have them hidden away in some building?
Well, yeah, that's something that you can address, we might have to alter the whole bylaw, it's just the ADUs are designed on parking spaces, not. Garages and if you add another garage, it's still on that parcel, that lot can only have three garages. So if you have a two car house, two car garage for one house, you can have an A D U with one car garage. But if you have a three car garage already on your house, you can't have a garage in the A D U.
But I'm just, I'm just going to Brett's point, you know. You're gonna have four cars there, so you could, you could have one, two, three cars sitting outside, would you rather have that than having them, you know, hidden?
Yeah, but if you're gonna allow that, we should just change the bylaw to allow it, you know, we shouldn't. We shouldn't put in something that allows people to ignore the bylaw.
Right, right.
I'm not saying we should, but that's why I think Brett and my point is that.
Maybe it's a four car garage that goes on now in these days, I don't know, but.
Or that we do something separate with the ADUs, that we have this two, three car garage situation for a single house. And if you have an A D U, then you allowed an additional one. Two. You know, beyond the 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 maximum number of three.
Yeah, I mean, that's not something to solve today, just trying to get it out there.
Yeah, that's my point, just to some. Sorry, Jim?
It's a designated deducted from the allowable A D U square footage.
Well.
Your twelve hundred square feet, you better be a small garage. I mean, I had a twelve hundred square foot house before I moved to Sherburne and we had a one car garage that wouldn't fit a car. It it would have seemed out of scale to have a twelve hundred square foot house with a two car garage on it.
Yeah.
You know, so.
But garage, but there are many that. You, they say to build your A D U over your garage, all the garages have bones from above them and that's where they want to put the A D Us. So.
There's a lot of new houses now that all they see are garages on the front of the road.
Right, I mean, that's, that's the thing, there's an architectural sort of aesthetic too, to having four car garages allowed in a town.
Yeah.
I mean, there's, seems like there could be re- reasons, I'm just not maybe top of mind right now.
So this will go up again, because I know this residence does want to have that addressed and talked about, so.
Be good to, be good to. Um. Okay, oh no, they wanted to have storage automobiles being allowable use.
So it's really a question of, does a shed become a garage?
Yeah, yes. Without changing the dimensions or anything like that.
Right, yeah. Right, but if you're gonna collect a car, you'd like to put it in someplace, you know, you could see it, but. Um, so I think that was it for housekeeping updates right now, where to go with that.
Yeah, I mean, honestly, it. It wouldn't bother me if we allowed more, because I personally think if somebody's gonna own six cars. I would kind of think it actually looks better to have them undercover instead of. Having three cars in the garage and three cars always outside, but.
Some of the four kids who did have six cars.
But, I don't know, it's just.
Yeah.
But I I just don't want to put in, I I don't want to put in a loophole. I want to either change it or keep the restriction we have.
I think that that's reasonable, yeah.
Okay, next item on the agenda?
Fun bylaw update. In the last two weeks, I have not had any time to look into it, I'm looking at else's. So to be continued. Um, A D U updates, going down that list, we just, we talked about the low moderate for, low and moderate income one.
Do we have, we, but we have, we did the A D U bylaw and then subsequently the state issued. Guidelines.
Right, but we don't have ours back from the Attorney General yet, where they've approved what we did. That's, we have till October thirteenth, I think, for them, same with our N B T A three zone and we're waiting to hear that from them.
Yeah.
Nice, let's continue on.
Okay, um. Other items for consideration. I I don't really have anything else right now, is there anything else you think should be on the warrant so far? I will just keep that category.
Yeah.
Please for now, yeah. All right, Frank, E A zoning update?
So, um. There was a concern with changing the um, the E A zoning on the medieval crossing uh lot. And the issue was is that with the Toll Brothers, they were looking at increasing the square footage. Of the homes in that um, building development. And as a result, would need more, um. What's the right word, uh?
Thanks.
Open space area, and so we have to change the um, the zoning. Uh, for part of the area to make that happen. So we had a meeting with Toll Brothers to discuss this issue with them. To see what their plans are for the development. And what Toll Brothers is looking at is. Trying to work within the parameters of what they have, so that they don't need to change. The uh, the zoning, so whether we would do, whether we would need to do something more rapidly with a special um. Uh, annual town meeting or fall town meeting, a special fall town meeting, or whether we would do it at the. Twenty twenty six uh annual town meeting, so they're trying to avoid both of that. By looking at how they're structuring their sizing and spacing of the properties that they have, so that that change does not have to be made. So right now, um, we don't need to do anything with with changing that zoning in that region. Did I capture that somewhat correctly?
Right, they are just at fifty percent, they think if they shrink some of the units down to be the smaller units. I think when they came a couple of years ago, as the planning board, they talked about increasing the size of the units. And they had different models and they made the plan based on the biggest models and they will have to limit. The number of models they sell and have to have some of the sales be the smaller ones in order to meet our calculation in the E A area.
But just to, just to clarify, they did get approval from the town at a vote to increase the square footage.
Or and upper.
And and the stuff and the and the resulting open space, but because it's not zoned, they're gonna try and backtrack that a little bit, is what I, is that what I'm hearing?
The calculation that they they made was that if every single buyer buys the biggest. Highest option townhouse, that's what they were planning. If some, if more than fifty percent bought the smaller one, then they wouldn't have a problem. So there's this uh sweet spot right in between everybody buying the largest versus everybody. Buying the smallest, that will still get them with within that fifty percent. And if they limit a certain couple of those townhouses to the the smaller size. Then they could fall within that fifty percent. So that's what Heidi is referring to, is what it is that they're trying to. Do to make sure that they don't go over the square footage requirement needing that change. Because they don't want to make that change happen, they understand the situation, they don't want to have to change that zone.
Because our E A zoning says it has to be contiguous E A. Properties, so that's why that other piece that they were using out of the. Apartment building one, the Coolidge Street one, even though they would be owning it, it wouldn't be a contiguous E A, so, so.
It's in everyone's best interest.
Right, so, we're sharpening the pencils and unless we hear otherwise, we do not need to address this issue. We can cross that off on this one.
Timeline, who was, who was at the meeting, Frank?
It was um, person, two people from the select board, Marion and Stephen. Heidi, myself, and it was uh, three people from, two, three people from Toll Brothers. I don't have the 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 list right in front of me, but. And Heidi was, Jeremy was there too.
And then review the timeline, we don't need to go over right now, there's no change, we're. Pretty much on track, we're just gonna try and form things up more in the next month. On what our items are gonna be.
So the I M A is a nice critical milestone.
It's actually not even the I M A, it's the well testing.
For the Interbasement Transfer Act.
I can give you that as a planner update. Give you something. So Frank, the last one I have on our current planning board business is the public shade and scenic road tree hearing for our next meeting. Ever Source has requested that, um, I posted the list online under planning board. Um, there are about twenty scenic road trees, it's woodland, street. Pollis, a couple and Curved Street, one tree, I think on Curve or two. Um, and then the rest of the trees are public shade trees and that is on Washington Street primarily, quite a few. So the total tree number is fifty and the scrub brush is underneath them. Trying to figure out the best way to do it, the signs are being posted, there's little yellow signs on the trees that'll have a number. And then what's posted online um, on the main webpage and our planning board webpage. Is the the actual sheet with the description of the trees. Um, I'm hoping we can back. Excuse me?
Will there be a picture of the trees?
I'm trying to debate, I'll have to walk out and take fifty pictures of the trees, it's gonna be a lot of them and it's quite. Extensive, um. I'm gonna see what we can do to to get that, I was hoping people could, you know, drive down the road or get a look, but I will try and get pictures.
You should drive down a road where they've already been and see the after.
So you say they're all posted now?
They were supposed to be posted by end of Saturday.
And Sean's our tree warden, will he be present?
Yes, Sean is acting tree warden, he will be having comments, what I'm hoping to do is um, to meet with Sean before that. And which ones he absolutely says no to, which ones he agrees with, so that we can.
That would be really helpful.
Have a batch of them and say, okay, one, ten, five, seven, whatever, these ones.
That's, yeah, that.
Is any of this for supporting new construction or is this just for maintenance and protection of the existing lines?
Um, I don't know if they're updating, like the last time they did, they weren't updating the technology.
Yeah.
I don't know if it improves that part of it, most of its maintenance.
I think we should take a stroll down the farm road and see how that looks after um, they did their last job.
I know, but then you talk about the storms and the issues there too, it's, it's tough. A lot of the, a couple of trees I looked at were dead or dying, in which case. That would be a hazard. So, we'll try and get more feedback from Sean and he will be at the hearings.
Hey, I'll be back, um, like October first, um, let's touch base with trying to get pictures taken.
Okay, I'll try, so, uh, October first through the fourth, um, through the fifth or sixth, I'm gonna be pretty much out of commission on that. So I will try and get work before I can do something great before a meeting, but I'll try and get the pictures done before.
Well, don't necessarily do all of them, I could help because at that time that you're gone, I have some time and I I can grab some as well, so. We could touch base even before that time, that's when we'll be back to be able to do some work myself. And I could help with that.
All right. My business, Frank?
Yeah, um, I was wondering, um, how do you, or hooked in with the, the town center? Planning, right?
Yeah.
Anything going on there?
No, we have, we're in con- we're contracting with a um, different group. And that's going really well so far, but the contract wasn't signed as of a couple of days ago, we're, we're close. And I think this group is definitely more um, engaged, involved. And hopefully, we'll have something in the next week for an official announcement. But they already assisted the town a lot with some of the initial submissions.
What's this part?
The divergence in. Sixteen point seven, the tip project. On it. Um. I guess there was a swap, which is a Southwest Area Planning Meeting this morning. And that was, that was very interesting, there was, it was some new people from M A P C. And we have some new coordinators on our swap, swap is really the area planning group of some of the towns and it's. It's a very good group, I find it very informative, at least for me from the planning side, to hear what other towns are doing, how they're handling it. Um, Rentham is still going through their N B T A three A wrote again on November third, so they did not pass it yet. And um. Everyone's kind of shocked that they're still talking about, we're still talking about that. Uh, we, hot topic was A D Us, you know, problems with. What do you do, especially for towns like us with septic, you know, how do you count, count some of that, we're trying to get some help. Um, I brought up our water issue to them that we are, because the whole focus is housing, they want housing. And that's what the state says they want housing, but. To them that we are, because the whole focus is housing. They want housing and that's what the state says they want housing, but. D E P doesn't seem to be on the same page as the state on housing. And that they acknowledged that at this meeting today, that that seems to be. One of the barriers, you know, we find. We're conducting. Well, testing. At the Coolidge Street. Where we have to prove that we do not have enough on site water to D E P. What if it says that we do have enough, like we don't have the test results yet, but what if it says that we have enough? We still want to use another town. We still want to use the M W R in water because the whole premise was that it was not gonna be on site. So D E P at one time years ago, it said. Oh, no, that general chemical plume, you definitely will not want onsite water. Well, then another part of D P saying, oh, no, you have to prove that you need. You cannot produce it on your own. So it's mixed signals we're getting within D E P. You've got the housing group saying you want housing. Here we have a project to housing. We're trying to get through yet. We can't even. Progress until we get through. All of these environmental. Hurdles. And, uh, it's kind of very frustrating, but here in that, other towns have run into the issue. Water is a big issue in some of the other towns as well. They said Hawkington has a big P pass issue. Vellingham has some issues, so people are having trouble with water, even the ones that have. Water supplies right now. So it was discussed and the pushback to M A, M A P C. Today was, it's great that you talk about putting in housing, but we feel we've got bigger concerns such as the infrastructure and how to support that housing. So from our southwest area group. And when we get anywhere with it, I don't know, but I think. It's not just our town that's having. Some concerns.
Those just regular swap meetings?
Yeah.
I didn't get any notification of that.
We are on Metro West Regional.
I thought I was.
M W R.
To be, for both because. You're actually appointed as M A P C rep, right? And this is just M A P subgroups.
Yeah, I'm not on the M W Rs. Whenever it's you and Marion on that one and swap tended to be just the planners, like they don't usually have to, I mean, like the town planners. But I don't know why you wouldn't be on that one either then, if you wanted to.
Okay, yeah, yeah, just see. I mean, I, I think that's the way it's done is we're. Considered an M A P C rep. And. But Metro West and Swap are just two different subgroups of M A P C.
They are two different subgroups, but the Metro West one is more formal. And the swap one just happens to be planners that get together.
Okay.
And, and there's no dues for the swap one. There is dues for the.
Yeah.
Metro West one. There's no reason why you couldn't go to Metro West or the swap one. They, they both have different flavors.
Okay.
And. That is kind of wraps up into the town planner report too, from the Coolidge Street. We have, hearing a lot of. People coming in, talking about. Asking about A D U's and one of the things I did pick up at Indian today in Rentham. Was they had a, uh, brochure they put together. For. A D U's. It was called how to, how to A D U. And I thought that was really cute and they talk about different from me, but it is specific to Rentham. But I thought this is something we need. It would, it would coordinate with border health, conservation, different groups. I'm gonna bring it up to our land use meetings that we have every two weeks and see if it's something that Sherburne would like to create because this resident was trying to ask me. Questions and I'm giving her the planning side, then border health was trying to tell us the other side and. It's like, we should have a brochure like this so we can hand out to people. Now, here are the two different Sherburne types, because I, I was just trying to explain to her, just we have two different types and. They are different.
Speaking of A D U's, uh, Jeremy sent me a, and you probably have this as well, Heidi, but I just wanted to mention this before I forget. Um, there's a presentation on, uh, A D U's, uh, I think it's from M A P C. And there are two presentation sessions, uh, on A D U's, um, resources for. To aid local planning efforts, highlights best practices, updates on current A D U initiatives at the. E O H L C and question and answers is what's the topic? And the, the two presentations, one is, uh, September the thirtieth from one to two. And the second opportunity for the exact same, uh, session is Thursday, October the second from two to three. So maybe, did you get that, uh, Heidi?
Yes, yes, I can forward that out to everyone.
If you could please. I'll see, you see if I could try to attend one of them, but, uh, somebody else may as well.
I'm trying to send you guys information when I come across things, which is the planners has some, I, I sent one to Jim today on historic preservation planning that comes up, so I'll try and keep. Forwarding. Any of them that come up. Uh, and, um. Also. On our. Planners. List serve, they were posting about the Department of Energy Resources guidelines that are coming up. They're gonna be doing some information sessions. Uh. It, it looks like it is gonna be some big changes on how the town's permit and what the state's trying to take over on some of permits, but it's still really up in the air. They. Are looking for public feedback. They will, official public hearing will be, will be held on October fifteenth. Um. And after they have that, we're gonna hold it for several days, you know, they'll be closing out and coming up with their guidelines. So I will forward this as well if anyone wants it. Well, I don't have the official notice for when the public hearing is. When I get that, I'll forward it if anyone else wants to go on the public hearing. The other ones they listed were all in person. On Buzzards Bay. Danvers, Pittsburgh and Amherst. Yeah, yeah, but I think it's, it's good, but. They, they did say there's gonna be a substantive change to the local permitting process. Something will keep in and I don't know if we can get it on this town meeting for. Again, it just gives me shades of the A D U where we're gonna be rushed and. Guidelines are gonna come out after we've had all our. Humans. So.
So Heidi, is that all for you?
That is all for me. I'm looking for that email, I'll forward it to. People right now.
Anybody else with any, uh, updates or comments? Do we, I don't know if it's. Pertinent, uh, to talk about the M V P two point O. At this point with this group, I think it's too early. In. In the process right now.
Yeah, I think that the consultant has been hired and starts, has started. Um. It's going to be a year process probably of which they will be reaching out to different people and, and, uh.
Different. Vehicles, different, uh. Volunteer organizations within our town and, uh, they, by the end of the year, we should at least be able to, uh, come up with one seed. Project is the idea and, uh, I think some of the people on the meeting would like to see something more than that happen in that period of time, but. That's kind of the, uh, the, the timeline of things. M V P stands for municipal of vulnerability, preparedness, blah, blah, blah. Um, to try to make our town, um. Less vulnerable and more prepared. Any other topics for this evening?
No, it's a long, other plan we're working on is an open space recreation plan. Um, that's very active right now. We'll try and get that done within the next six months. There's also a climate. A hazard mitigation plan. That's another one that's working and will overlap a little bit with the M V P as well. Um, so I'm working with that for. That also is in the next year to be completed.
What's the question for these plans? Is there like a regulatory or, or a grant incentive?
They are grant incentives to, if you have them, you are eligible.
Okay.
Kind of especially the hazard mitigations, kind of best practices.
We have a new sustainability manager, um, working in our town, working quite heavily with the Energy Sustainability Committee. But it's also, um, predominant focus is, um, sustainability. And, uh, so. She's. Her name is Amelia and she'll be working on some of the M V P stuff and some of these other areas or at least helping within some of those other areas. Part-time for, um, Sherborne and part-time for Hollis. I hear silence in the room. Does that mean that we, we, we said all the words we could possibly say for this evening?
I was asleep, let's wait.
I think we're done.
Next meeting, October seventh, hybrid, and then October twenty first, we'll make that a zoom. I guess, is that there?
All right, so did I hear a motion or am I making a motion to adjourn?
Second.
At nine oh four P M on September sixteenth. Jim?
Hi.
Rob?
Hi.
Steph?
Hi.
And I, Frank, as well. Thank you, everybody. Have a wonderful evening and couple of weeks until we see each other again for this, uh. Big meeting.